We're on, so we're going to start our workshop. Mr. Bottana, you have the floor.
Yep, so tonight what we want to do is, this is, you had a first read for the memorandum of understanding between the Portland Police Department and the school district around the SRO program. And so, as you know, this is a revision of the MOU that you considered back in October. And so, tonight what we wanted to do was to just sort of walk through what the changes are and, you know, take any questions and comments that you have. The chief is here with us tonight. He can also help me to answer any of those questions. So, just by way of background, I think that we've done a tremendous amount of work since back in October to try to address some of the concerns that were raised by the board at that, during that discussion. And so, the, you know, by way of background, as you know, the MOU is something that has only been in place since 2015, but the SRO program, as you know, has been longstanding in the district predates that, that MOU. The reason that we're doing this, that we're revising the MOU because it's been in place since 2015, is primarily because the Portland Police Department has implemented body-worn cameras across the police force and only the SROs remain where they're outfitted, they're equipped to have their body-worn camera because when they're not in school, they're regular police officers and they would need to have those cameras. But they want to be able to activate them in school. And so, that's what necessitated the changes to the MOU. And as I said, we've had very successful negotiations with the police department and their attorneys, with our attorney, and so that's what we're here to talk about today. So, the key revisions are the date change. So, the date on the MOU changes to 1/20 instead of 9/19, which is what the original MOU shows. And that just reflects the fact that we have been working on this. It probably should be updated now to reflect that it is now March. Among the key changes, the MOU now includes a requirement that within a year of assignment, any SRO complete the 40-hour National Association for School Resource Officer Training course. And so, that's something at the police department's expense, something that we are incorporating into this. This is very important because I know that there are other substantive concerns about the way that the school district operates its relationship with the school resource officer. So, we are cognizant of the fact that there will be additional changes as a result of the work that is happening at the district level to create policies that govern the way in which the district and the SROs work together. And so, that is something that is specifically referenced in the MOU as something that will happen and will govern future MOUs with the police department. The body-worn camera can never be in active, in covert mode. That was something that we had discussed at the meeting and the police department has agreed to that. We have, under the agreement that we're proposing, images will be downloaded daily from the device to a secure server. So, they won't be sitting on the device day after day and accessible in any way other than through the custody of records, which I'm going to talk about in a second. Because that, I think, is probably the most substantive issue that we had to deal with and the one that we, that required the most amount of work. So, I think one of the things that is important to note is that the records, as they currently exist, are not subject to a public access request. So, they can't be FOIA'd to get those records. The police department will not release those records to anyone other than juvenile justice and, you know, and that includes juvenile justice prosecutors unless there is parent permission or a court order. They also will not release it to the school district unless it's specifically requested by the superintendent and then only if the police department determines that there's a legitimate reason. So, it's not, you know, anybody can look at it at any time. It requires approval by the, by the police department's designee for that, for us to be able to get access to those records. And then, I think this is important because of one of the substantive discussion points that we had was concern about the, what happens when records are released and, you know, they are no longer held by the police department or the school district. And so, the, the release on the part of the police department will specify that it cannot be shared with another jurisdiction unless, again, there's a court order or parent authorization to, to release that. So, I think that's the way that we've tried to build in a firewall to prevent a record, for example, that's taken in, in school and is shared with the prosecutor's office from being passed on to another jurisdiction. And so, that's the, the way that, that we're managing that control of the records. So, you know, the next steps is obviously, we're discussing this tonight. We're hoping to bring this for a vote on, on March 17th, so at our next board meeting. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are working, Assistant Superintendent Townsend is leading an effort to look at existing, at the existing policy which never became a policy, is attached to the MOU as a, as an appendix, to turn that into a formal policy, which again, would require the board's approval. And we're doing that, not just sort of looking at that policy, but also looking at model policies from Massachusetts and from Washington State. And, you know, we'll do a thorough review of those and make changes to whatever policy we bring to you to incorporate the, the best practices from, from those, from those policies. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. So, I guess, do we have any questions you want to start off with? Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, I can. Go ahead.
Our mics are working, so we can use them.
The mics are working.
They're working, so we can use them.
And it's being broadcast, so it'd be good.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the reminder there. I'm curious, in what circumstances a court order might be used to gain access to body-worn camera recordings?
Chief, do you want to help with that?
Good question. I would actually be curious about that, too. I spoke, as part of this process, as we were working through it, to the district attorney, John Saraback, as well as to the supervisor for the Juvenile Community Corrections Office, specifically relevant to when they would be releasing it. I have never received, in 31 years, 12 of those overseeing SROs in South Portland and now for the last six months, obviously, here in Portland, I've never received such a request. So, that's why I kind of agree with you. That is a valid question. And having said that, just on the point of the DA and the, and the JCCO, they had the same feedback to me. They're like, "We have never gotten that sort of request for those sorts of records." And they, and they see those as third-party records. They would refer any such request back to us anyway. So, there's some protections there.
Great. Actually, I think there are another, you know, on the same point, or another question there. So, it says that cannot be shared with another jurisdiction without parent permission or a court order. That's talking about the, this case that has never happened, so sorry, I'm digging a little deeper on this. But it says that it cannot be shared by that party with another party. And I'm wondering what authority allows, I don't know if it's the district or the department, to, to make that sort of permission, to deny that permission, to share beyond that?
Probably, probably no such authority, quite frankly, as far as, and that's why I believe in the, in the MOU, we have stated that we will make that request. Both of those parties that I've already spoken to have agreed, again, that that, that there are, those are not records that they would release anyway, the third-party records, because they belong to the Portland Police Department, and they refer just any sort of request back to us. So, that's kind of, I think, where the check and balance comes in, is it still comes back to us, and we will be the ones that would require court process or consent.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Balfins?
Ms. Vigor?
If, you know, the Portland Police Department makes this request, but either juvenile justice or prosecutive authorities don't abide by it, what actions will you take in the future, if any?
If they, if we provide it to them and they turn it over to another, another entity, I would have to have that conversation with them. I hadn't particularly considered that because I, we have a good working relationship with both, and I just don't presume that that would be happening.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Vigor?
I, under the access to recordings, so, this is building off of the recent questions as well, but it says that the, the recordings won't be released by the police department and to any person outside the Portland Police Department except to juvenile justice or prosecu- prosecutorial, excuse me, authorities. Could you explain who those authorities could be?
For, for our purposes, for state-level cases, which is what all of our juvenile cases are, it is, it is the district attorney's office. Essentially, the first step is the juvenile corrections office, which falls in the Department of Corrections. And discussions with them, including with their Assistant Attorney General, Representative, they were specifically third-party, those are your records. We would not release those, we would not release those. And the district attorney's office. If a case goes through and gets referred from juvenile corrections for prosecution, it would then go to the juvenile prosecutor and the district attorney's office to go through the court adjudication process. So, it's, it's those two entities that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. And then, there's a policy that's referenced in, in the document, in the MOU, and I'm betting that we've seen this before, but it would be helpful to have it. It's called, it's the relations with school resource officers and law enforcement authorities?
It's, it's attached to the, in the workshop materials.
Okay.
I believe. Can you double-check real quick? Because I know I put it in there, so.
And can you remind us what the genesis of that document is?
So, that was a policy that never became a policy. I don't know the exact genesis of it. It was something that our attorney recommended that we adopt at the time that the district entered into that MOU for the first time. And for some reason, which our attorney does not fully recall exactly how it happened, it never made it to the board as a policy, and instead, it was attached as an appendix to the MOU. So, it doesn't have the force of policy. It is a statement of how we intend that to operate. I just want to be clear that, so it's not a policy, and we are cognizant of the fact that it needs to become a policy, but in the process, we are looking at broadening our, our look at what it is that should be in that policy to reflect best practice from some of those places that we've talked about.
Thank you. I didn't realize that that was what that document was. And I have a couple more questions. Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
I certainly appreciate all this work. I should have started with that. But I have a question about kind of some, you know, how, if this addresses some of the fundamental issues that we need to understand. Because when I read on page two, when an SRO may use, may activate a camera, I'm wondering who decides whether, you know, there's a paragraph that starts towards the end of that page, "The parties acknowledge that conduct by persons in the schools may implicate both school rules and potential violations of the law." I'm wondering, who decides whether it's disciplinary action or criminal activity? And in the gray area, since we don't define who actually decides in this document, are we subjecting students to potential privacy violations?
So, I, I will try to answer that, and then, Chief, you can, you can chime in. I think that the SRO makes that decision in the moment. So, you know, the principal or the assistant principal is not directing the SRO to make that decision. You know, they could potentially say, "You should turn on your camera," and the SRO would still be in the place of making the decision of like, "Yes, I should turn on my camera" or not. So, I think that that addresses the first piece, that the SRO is the one that's making the decision to turn the camera on. I'm not sure that I understand how it would be a privacy violation to turn the camera on if that record just became something that was filed for 385 days and then, you know, deleted and nobody ever looked at it again. So, the, it becomes a record when it's, you know, if it's shared in any way. And again, this, so I don't think that there is a violation of privacy at that moment, any more so than there is with the fact that we have cameras in our schools at, you know, at all times that are, you know, recording me walking through the building, our principals walking through the building, and our students, you know. So, we, we have that, is in place at all times.
Can I piggyback off that? On that point, so, so two things, because one of the other things that we, we wordsmithed to some degree is, was the threshold for activating the camera by the, by the SROs. As you may recall, we already had a higher threshold than our offices are required to, when, when our offices on the street are required to turn the cameras on. So, in the school, it's, you know, pretty much, it's any law enforcement or anticipated law enforcement encountered by our offices on the street. In the school, it's only in those instances involving criminal activity or instances involving-
Disrupt.
-disruptive adversarial confrontational behavior. So, it's either those situations where the, the person may be getting summons, may be arrested, may be getting questioned or searched or detained, which to me are those key situations where our actions are oftentimes likely to be called into question. And, and so, having that objective documentation was, was important. The other thing that I'll just note on that is, since our, our meeting, our discussions in October, I had asked the SROs to begin to track how many times per month they would have activated the camera. And it's literally between zero and one time per month that that, that they're reporting that that would be happening in the school because of the higher threshold. I think one month, actually, the last month, there was two, two occasions where it would have been activated at Deering, but I think at least one of those, if not, if not two last month, were extracurricular activities, not actually during the school days. So, they were, you know, if another officer was working at a basketball game, for instance, or something, they would have, would have activated under those same circumstances, so.
Thank you. And Superintendent, to answer your question, I think the concern is that there's this gray area between disciplinary action and criminal activity. And are we creating a police record for disciplinary action that's, that, that isn't get, isn't then getting that heightened privacy protections under the law?
And again, I guess I would, I would say that we would only be able to access that record if we felt that it was a disciplinary issue that we needed to, to follow up on, and then it would be at the police department's discretion to say, "Sorry, that's for disciplinary purposes, and we won't furnish that record."
But what if it's going the other way and the police department is taking disciplinary, is taking what really could be disciplinary action and proceeding with criminal activity? That's my point.
And, and I get that point, and I think that that's where the, the work that we're doing around the, the policy in terms of, you know, when SROs are activated at the school level, I think that that's the work that we need to do. So, I will concede that that is a gray area, but it's a gray area in terms of the way that the SROs operate beyond the body-worn camera.
And I'll just, same thing, and it's in circumstances where, obviously, our SROs, and I think that's been more clearly articulated in this MOU, do not take or aren't involved in administering discipline in the school. And, and they know if the behavior that they're witnessing may have crossed the criminal threshold, which is when they would have to activate it. But the outcome, to your point, the outcome may not be that that person gets charged in the end with any sort of an offense. It may end up taking the disciplinary route instead. Again, the SRO wouldn't be involved in that. The record would stay with the police department, so it's kind of a, a parallel track, if you will.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Thank you both for all this work. I wasn't on the board yet when this conversation started, and it's been one I've been following and I've been learning a lot about. And that includes, like, for example, I thought SROs were located in our schools because of our fear of mass shootings, which is obviously an unfortunate reality in our world. And what I learned was that SROs were actually first place in schools when schools were integrated because white people were afraid of black people's behavior. And seeing that there's been a continuation of, and I'm not saying anybody in this room is racist, but that the use of police force is part of a racist structure that disproportionately affects people with black and brown skin, it heightens my awareness and sensitivity to this whole issue. And the body cams is, seems to be one pathway, a vector, if you will, to criminalize our students when that's not always, or seldom, what we would want as educators. So, so I have a lot of heightened concerns about that. So, one thing I've noticed as I've been doing some learning and research is looking at various MOUs, and we had a parent that just shared Massachusetts draft MOU that came from the Attorney General Office in Massachusetts. And one thing I noticed as a starting point is that the language in our MOU gives a lot of preference to the police department over Portland Public Schools, whether that's selection and oversight and that sort of thing, versus like the Massachusetts one, which just has very clear language that is more education-focused than it is law enforcement-focused. And I'll just highlight that as a high level, it's something that concerns me and does not make me feel like, as much as I hear things that are like the right signals from the police chief and others, that like, you're trying to do the right thing and there's some things between the lines that are happening, it, the, the language that we have doesn't codify that in a way that I would like to see. And then, Chief, could you clarify, does the footage get shared with the DA and the prosecutors, and in which way, in what circumstances does that happen?
It would only happen if, if the officer, if a summons or an arrest was made. So, I didn't bring the numbers. We looked at, I think, roughly the last eight years of actual arrests that took place at Portland and Deering High School, and it was, you know, like, one to, I think, the high of like seven in a year, which is kind of an anomaly out of that eight-year period, is like one to three, maybe four during the course of a school year. So, so, so very low numbers. And I think that is really, quite frankly, because of the good work and the relationships that the officers have with, with the students and with the other staff in terms of where they're looking to, to form those outcomes. We did try to incorporate some of that component on page two, the bottom, the bottom, next to the last paragraph, and the last two sentences, it says, "It's understood that SROs will be responsible," well, excuse me, "will not be responsible for non-criminal school disciplinary matters, the responsibility of which rests with PPS staff, and SROs will utilize juvenile community resources and seek to divert juveniles and utilize restorative justice practices whenever possible and feasible and consistent with, with our policies." And we, we end up collaborating with our youth with Maine Youth Court and Maine Restorative Justice Institute. So, those are the kind of the mechanisms that we use that are, I would say, even in those cases where, the few cases where a student is charged with something, they go the restorative route through that process, as opposed to the prosecutive prosecution route through the courthouse.
And when there is arrest made, is it just default that the footage would go to the DA and the prosecutor?
Not necessarily. Usually, most, most charges go first to Juvenile Community Corrections, the packet itself, as far as the paperwork would go. They kind of make a determination on an intake-type basis where they're, what track they're going to go. If they were going to be recommending prosecution, again, yes, they would absolutely need the video. I can see, depending on the circumstances of what is alleged, they may want to see the video in order to make that determination or assessment, which is why we have that ability to share it with them. But no, it would be on a case-by-case basis on, on those finite number of circumstances.
And Superintendent, how does that compare to the footage that's on our school cameras? Is that the same, different?
Do you mean, do we have that footage requested?
If an arrest is made in our school, what is the protocol, the same or different, compared to-
Yeah, and I, I can tell you that I've never been party to sharing, you know, footage from our cameras with any, any prosecutor. That's not to say that, and I don't know, Sheila, if you've, yeah, so, I know that in my tenure that we've never done that. Nobody's requested it. I will say, and I, I don't, I don't mean to, you know, speak for, for the chief, but even in those instances where, you know, a JCCO might be making a decision and having a conversation with the, with the juvenile district attorney, in many cases, they're going to go off of the police report that was filed. They may not need to actually look at the footage. The footage may just be there because that's what the officer turned on when they actually made the arrest. But there could be other evidence that is sufficient to, so I think, you know, to the chief's point, this is primarily in those instances where it could be disputed whether the police officer acted appropriately in things along those lines, that the cameras, that the footage would be brought to bear. And I think that that's, that's more likely than the cases where somebody would ask for the footage because, you know, there was somebody who was arrested for possession and we have evidence that there was possession or something along those lines.
That's helpful. And I'm just thinking through the scenarios by which this creates new exposure for our students that is, it is different than current protocol, particularly when, as we've talked previously, the new threats and realities to human beings in our communities related to Customs and Border Patrol and immigration control. So, thank you.
Ms. Bondo?
I'm still in a, in favor right now and just want to throw it, then I will abstain myself because it's too many situation positions there is still unclear on my side because after one hour, what we have the, the previous presentation with the, the dual identification on the student, and then we try to, to build, we try to add a certified special ed education to those to make sure they can recognize a language barriers and a special ed education than those student need. And we come out with almost 240 students, then in our district, and we could identify if they really need a special education or there is a language barrier. So, that means it's assumption, it's a perception, how we do those assessments. So, that means if we cannot still recognizing in our, in our discipline, then that's going to be a criminal activity or conduct or social emotion from, from the, our learning from the district or the, the administration in the school. So, that means who's going to start making the decisions? It's going to be by assumption or presumption. Who's going to make your decision then? Does the social emotion activity or conduct or does a criminal activity? Because we still have an issue to identify even if those student are the language barriers or aid, special aid. And we've been sending a lot of our student to the special ed education, or they're supposed to be on the language barrier, education and learning those language barrier. So, I'm still confusing who's going to making the decision right here. It's going to be the resource officer, it's going to be the administrator. So, are they going to be able to define which one is really need to be recorded, which one need to be, have a action of the officer, then- then be on the administration's side?
So I think there's two different issues. The decision around recording will be made by the SRO. The decision whether something is of disciplinary nature that somebody needs to intervene is something that our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our ed techs make every day with, you know, the thousands of interactions that they're engaged in with students. And, you know, I won't say that we always make the right call. Again, you know, we know that our discipline data is what our discipline data is. So I don't, you know, I'm not sitting here saying that it's, you know, we always get it right. But that will not change as a result of those body cameras being activated. The decision to turn on the body camera will be made by the SRO based on their training, based on police protocols, not because a principal says, "Turn on the body camera," or, you know, the superintendent says, "Turn on the body camera." That is, you know, a decision that they will make. So I don't want to conflate the fact that, you know, we have disproportionate disciplinary referrals with the body camera issue. That's why we are addressing the broader policy around how SROs function in our schools, and that is work that we look forward to doing, working with the police department, working with our principals, working with community advocates to make sure that we get that policy right. And we are looking at things like the MOU from Massachusetts, as well as, you know, the policy that was put out by ACLU in Washington State. So we're cognizant of the fact that there are, you know, issues that we need to address, but that is not the, what we're trying to deal with today, which is the body camera, the ability to activate the body camera. To answer your question specifically, that will not be made by the principal. That decision will be made by the school resource officer.
Let's go Ms. Truparo, and then Ms. Victor, and then I have a few that I want to bring up, and then Ms. Moriarty.
Thank you. I appreciate the prolonged negotiations that have gone into this and your attendance at this late hour. I was curious, you had mentioned that within the last couple of months, your officers would have turned on the camera between zero and one time per month. And just to kind of get back to that question about the gray area, how many of those times would have actually resulted in criminal behavior, and how many would have simply resulted in behavioral issue?
They weren't able to pull all the specific ones individually. The ones that I did get were, it looks like two were fights in progress. In one of those cases, a summons was issued to one of the students, so clearly criminal. The other ones were criminal, like a criminal trespass matter was one of the issues. That was at a basketball game. And another one was related to actually a agitated confrontational parent was one of the other ones that I realized. So it wasn't even a student. It was an interaction that was not going in a very positive direction. And had they had the camera, that would have been a good interaction, both to have documented and also one of the things that we found effective by the officers using it on the street is by saying, "Look, I'm recording this interaction right now," as it helps to actually kind of de-escalate the situation, the confrontation, and prevent it from going in the wrong direction.
I appreciate that. I used to work in the court, and I remember the marshals having that effect with individuals in the courthouse. So I understand how that works. I'm wondering, I think when we originally had a workshop on this, you had given statistics around, like, within the last year or something, how many arrests there had been. And I think it was either none or maybe one. I don't remember if it was-
Yeah, and that's one of the ones I did not bring tonight, but we actually have pulled more data at a request of, there was a media outlet that had requested more data, and it's actually pretty intensive to kind of pull that, but we ended up being able to pull up about the last eight years.
Okay.
The highest during that eight-year period was seven arrests at one of the high schools. Again, that was kind of like an anomaly. The majority of them were in the one, three, fours arrests per year, per school year type of range, so.
That was going to be my follow-up question, was whether you had data going back further than that. And, you know, just to kind of, you know, cap off my questioning is when I'm considering any kind of policy change, you know, I wonder what the reason behind it is. And I know that in this case, you know, it was presented as this is going to be in line with Portland Police Department policy. But I'm wondering, you know, beyond that, school-specific, what is the problem that we're trying to fix with body cameras?
Yeah, the, so to back up a little bit, the police department, the city of Portland and the police department, back in 2016, I think it actually is when it started, if not, it was 17, decided that, for several different reasons, that having cameras on the offices on the street, and there's been some national studies and stuff on it, was important, and it was a direction that they wanted to go. So they went through the process. They had a small select group of officers that kind of did some evaluation. In April of 2019, that group expanded. The testing went well, and it was rolled out to, yeah, April 2019, it was rolled out to everyone in the police department, kind of incrementally. The last two officers, literally the only two officers, actually, out of 161 sworn officers are the two school resources, two school resources that we have are the ones that do not have access to that. From the city's perspective, from the department's perspective, from my perspective, certainly that, the cameras are, again, it's a tool. I think the frequency of their use is low, which is a good thing, because that reflects, I think, on the work that's being done in our schools. But the times when we would be asking them to activate the cameras are those where, again, our actions as the police department are going to be called into question. It could result in potential litigation. Again, it's when we're taking action that is implicating the Fourth Amendment rights of a student, is to the benefit, I believe, of certainly the officer, certainly the student, as well as the staff and the parents, to have an objective level of documentation of how that interaction went if those actions are called into question. So that's the 30,000-foot answer to that question.
And I know you asked from the school perspective, and I just, you know, we did not, you know, we did not actively seek this out. This is something that the police department initiated. And as part of our partnership, we understand, you know, I personally understand, you all, we're asking you to understand it as well, understand the motivation behind this from the police department, and that's the reason that we're supporting it. But this was not something that we initiated, or we thought that we needed to have, you know, body-worn camera footage to be able to do our job more effectively.
And just, I thought of a follow-up question from the school perspective. Those sort of gray area, for instance, maybe an angry parent, you know, years ago before SROs, a situation like that could have occurred, and it would have been handled administratively. And so what's the, I guess, what's the school perspective on the need for this in situations like that?
Yeah, and I think that this is where, you know, where we agree that we need to look at our policies more carefully, because I do think that there is a tendency to, because the officer is there, to bring the officer along for something that should be just an administrative conversation. You know, when Casco Bay or any of our middle schools or any of our elementary schools has a agitated parent, and that happens all the time, they don't have an SRO to bring to the, so I do think that that is part of the work that we need to do, is to get clear ourselves around whether that is something that we should bring an SRO to, or we should just handle the way that we do at, you know, Casco Bay, at our middle schools, and so on.
Okay. And so there's, just to be perfectly clear, there's intention from both sides, the school and the police department, to work on issues just like that going forward and creating more comprehensive policies around SROs in general?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Moriarty?
Thank you. First of all, I am an advocate of our SROs in our schools. I've seen it in action. I've seen our SRO at Daring High School, right in, you know, right in, he can calm students down very effectively, just, and granted, it may seem like it's antiquated way of managing behavior or and/or potentially even a racist way of managing behavior. However, I'm looking at it also in a larger national context of having moved here from Washington DC. You would not have any of the public schools without a metal detector test, metal detector machine you're walking through every day. We've been very, very fortunate that we haven't had any of the issues that have happened nationally. And I don't want to say, and maybe it did historically come from white people saying, "Okay, we need more protection." I don't know the history, and I appreciate you, I would love to read more about that. But from what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing, as Anna pointed out, what are we, what are we seeing day-to-day in our schools? And in particular, hearing from our principals, when they say, "This is actually a value to us, it's helpful to us," those are the people I count on to see and reflect. I'm not in the school every day, but what I have seen when I am in the school makes a big difference. So all that being said, the body cameras, on the other hand, I want to say thank you to both of you for working collaboratively on some type of, you know, where we are today with some type of proposal, because, you know, initially it would have been like, "Well, now we're just going to scrap SROs. We're not going to, you know, come together and work on this." So I appreciate you both doing this for us. And it took a lot of months, but I think we're at a better place. And also, I personally love to know that we have a collaboration with the Portland Police Department. I mean, if I get injured or have any incident in my home, I would want to know that they are there to call and have my back. So with all that said, I can go on many tangents since I'm getting late, but I'll get to my notes. So can you just help me understand the NASRO course, the 40 hours, what does that particularly cover? And you said also, we would then be paying for that, and what's, oh, you would be paying for that, okay. Can you just explain a little bit of what sort of topics are covered in that type of training?
I might glimpse over my right shoulder here in a minute, because I know Officer Black has attended the NASRO school, as has Officer Bennett, so both of our officers have already attended that program. It's a 24-hour, 40-hour. I'll let you kind of explain.
I went a long time ago. So this is like my 12th year or so. I went into it after a year at Portland High. So it basically, it was pretty boring for me. I could have basically taught the course at that after you work in a city school. But they talk about all aspects of school safety, interacting with teenagers, teenage development of the brain, and just all that stuff that every officer that becomes to work in with kids needs to know. But I don't, I haven't, that was, like I said, 10, 12 years ago I went to one. So I'm sure it's a lot different now than it was. But they actually have advanced courses that you can take on strategically making your school safe and all this other stuff.
Do you feel like you might need a refresher?
No, I'm good.
An updated version?
After 12 or 13 years of working with kids every day, I have it down pretty good.
Okay. So you've gone through that. Has our other SRO already gone through that? So technically, we don't, they don't need to do, okay.
They do have, like, ongoing, I think the last year, the year before, yeah, I think it was last year, they have mandated training through the state. So both, well, Portland Police Department, every officer received continuing education on policing the teen brain. Every Portland police officer is trained as a crisis intervention team, 40-hour employee, which is, and is actually a juvenile component and piece to that, for interacting with our youth. And I was talking to Officer Bennett this morning, who's the Portland SRO, and just talking about kind of how his day looks and the interactions that he has, and just the impact that he has, because he knows these kids. He may have responded to a domestic sort of situation in their homes. He kind of knows them. So a lot of times, you know, I'm sure you see the same thing. They're coming in because they can relate to him. They know that, you know, he knows mom and dad, he knows brother and sister, and so just some really cool work being done in the schools for sure, and I appreciate it.
I actually taught a course of police youth, interaction with youth, and all the whole program put on. I went all over the state and helped teach that and everything. There's all kinds of stuff going on, reference juvenile stuff in the police community.
Great. Actually, that leads me to my question. I was going to leave to last, but I mentioned this, I think, in the last discussion. It'd be really great if we do the reverse. I think there's a really good learning moment for our students to know why you have a body camera on, what might have shifted, you know, just so our high school students understand this and that it's not in any way intended to be confrontational or to violate their privacy or, just so something that goes to the students, so they're very clearly aware, whether even if, since they have a presentation at the high schools. But I would love to see some kind of, this is a learning moment, I think, for both sides. It shouldn't be just, "Okay, we're going to bring this in, and you're going to have to put up with it." It more should be more an interactive, even discussion with the students to, so they can understand it and discuss it.
Funny part is, so we want to run these in a non-covert way, so the kids see a green light, because I work outside details, I see them all over the place. And they think the green light means it's recording all the time. So they'll dance in front of me and do everything, do all kinds of weird stuff. It's not recording. I don't know why they make me wear it green, but it's not recording. It's just funny. That's how the kids interact when they see that.
So that, sorry, that was just one moment, is if we could ensure that that is brought back to the schools, is can we do some type of, if students would have like a Q and A about it and better understand it, it'd be great.
They talk to me every day, so.
Yeah.
I'd offer as well on that point, I think I might have mentioned it, one of the last ones is sending out some sort of communication through the school, it can come from my office to the parents as well. So at least if there's that conversation at home, at least they can kind of understand.
And we will absolutely do that once this is approved.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, oh, it mentioned in the MOU, training in FERPA, and I just want to follow up on that, too. It said, "School, Portland Public Schools would ensure that the SROs would be trained in FERPA," and I just wanted to follow up on that question. We're training them?
Yes.
You've already been trained?
They've already, they are already trained on that.
I think that's actually part of the NASRO training at this point as well, so.
Okay. So I think that's all for now, but I very much want to hear also from our students and their perspective, if they're willing to speak on it. But thank you very much for being here this late. Thank you.
I have a few things I wanted to ask. A lot of the things that I had made myself notes on have come up, but I still wanted to clarify. So I guess I'll start, I'll start where we were just talking about with the NASRO training. So actually, I went into the NASRO website, and there's an outline of the content of that course. It's a five-day, 40-hour course, and it covers a lot. It's actually, it has a lot of stuff. The unfortunate side, and I'm just looking at an outline of the content, so clearly I haven't taken it, because it covers so much, it spends very little amount of time on each thing. So for example, it devotes two hours to understanding special needs students. It devotes two hours on ethics and SROs, two hours on understanding the teen, three hours, actually, understanding the teen brain, and so on. So it, they do jam-pack a lot. So I guess I'm happy to hear that your officers have gone through additional training. My question would be, has that additional training also been as a NASRO provided?
No, they might have went to one, not related to some of that content, but on school safety, safety planning, response to active threats, those sorts of things, was what was one of the NASRO courses. What they do have, and again, maybe that's the three-day, 24-hour program, but they either have a three-day or a five-day advanced NASRO program. And we can look at what the, that's probably on there as well, but we can look at like what the content is on that. And yeah, so like each year, and it's something we actually have built into our policy, every, it's every year, every two years, training in crisis mental health. This year is going to be a two-hour block on dealing with people with substance use disorders, including children. So there's a lot of things, you're 100% right. That's the problem with, I think, policing and probably a lot of professions in general. There's just so much information that needs to be pushed out to our cops, to our teachers, and that they only get that sliver. So, but it's ongoing work for sure.
Absolutely. And, you know, in my profession in healthcare, same thing, when we go to courses, you know, sometimes we do it just because we have to accumulate certain CEUs, and, you know, half of us are just sitting through that class, waiting for it to be over.
But you're not that half, you're not in that half.
Pardon me?
You're not in that half.
Oh, I'm on my way out of the healthcare field. I'm growing vegetables for people. So I guess, I was going to ask also, you know, what, because in the MOU, it says that the SRO will seek and receive ongoing training relevant to working with- that the SRO will seek and receive ongoing training relevant to working in policing communities. So, I guess we sort of kind of covered that. Something else that came up was, one of the instances in which the, the camera would've been activated was a fight. So, I guess, question to the superintendent, and we answered it somewhat when we talked about how to deal with parents in schools that don't have SROs. If there is a fight, let's say in a middle school, is our practice to call the police department?
It's not our practice to call the police department for every fight. There could be instances where there is a fight and that there is a call to the police department as a result of that.
Like if there's a weapon or something?
Or there was premeditation and, you know, or, or, you know, a parent decides to inform the police about the incident. So, those things do happen, but it's not, you know, it's not our standard operating procedure, in the same way that it's not standard operating procedure at Portland High School or at Deering, that for every fight, we pick up the, the walkie-talkie and ask the SRO to come. In all likelihood, they would find out about it and they would be one of the responders, but it's not standard practice, like, don't do anything until the SRO gets there.
Absolutely. So, I am, so I wanted, before I go into my next point, building off of that, I recognize that we are envisioning doing some work later on to address some of the bigger concerns that we have about the program. But, I just want to throw it out there because we're discussing it, that in the model MOU from the state of Massachusetts, which I think is one of the ones that you've looked at, there's actual language that helps us guide when we differentiate between school discipline and when a SRO really is indicative to be involved. And it literally says that when there is real and substantial harm or threat or harm, excuse me, or threat of harm to the physical or physiologic or psychological well-being of other students, school personnel, or members of the community. So, I mean, that's pretty clear right there. So, as, as we've heard all the, and there's the second part, when there's real and substantial harm or threat of harm to the property of the school. So, just having like those little sentences on the MOU would probably appease some of the concerns that we have on, on the subjective nature of how and when we're calling on to the SROs. So, I see that as a relatively quick fix.
Let me just, I mean, while I agree with you, and I do think that we need language to that effect, I think that those are subjective calls. That is, again, somebody making the decision that there was imminent threat of harm and the standard for that is, you know, is not a objective one. There isn't a, you know, a laser that tells you this is one. This is like somebody looking at the situation and making the call. So, there is no, and so, training and disposition and all of those things come into play very importantly in that.
No, absolutely. And I, and I agree. It still ultimately becomes a subjective decision by the officer. Another thing that came up, which by the way, does not make anyone feel more comfortable. Another question that I had, yeah. So, we talked about that the police officers would not be involved in school disciplinary issues, but in, and maybe I need to have it clarified for me, in page two, in the third language from the bottom up, where it starts with, "SROs may serve as liaisons." So, the last sentence there finishes by saying that "The SRO shall cooperate fully with school building administrators during, during investigation of certain disciplinary matters." Am I misunderstanding that that is opposite of what we say then in the next paragraph that says that the SROs will not be responsible for non-criminal disciplinary matters? I feel like those two sentences are contradicting each other.
I can see that. I think that that is something that we can, we can work on. I mean, to me, that is at the core of why I do believe that we need to change the policy. So, it is not to say that, you know, I think that that is one of those areas, that, that it is, that there is gray that we need to figure out.
I think that would mean like if I saw something happening that should've been handled, or, you know, a kid's doing something wrong that would be held disciplined, and the principal asked me about it, then it's kind of, and I'm not gonna say, well, I'm not gonna tell you or anything and walk away. That's how I kind of see that.
I understand that. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot one question because I wrote it sideways, easy to miss. On the 40-hour NASRO training, any, any discussion ever come up about maybe having our administrators attend that training as well, so that they also build a better understanding of the SRO's role and, you know, the specialized training that they're receiving? As I was reading the same thing, the Massachusetts model MOU, that's something that, that was brought up there, that administrators could also and should also be encouraged to attend such training.
We can look at it, but we've not done that.
Yeah, so that, that, again, is worrisome, the contradicting. All right. Yeah, this is just building off of what I just said, you know, the, earlier about the subjective nature of, of when they're called. So, even though we're discussing the cameras, I think it's important, and it's almost impossible to differentiate the, or to rather, to not admit to the lack of clarity between school discipline and criminal activity, because it is during the criminal activity that the cameras will be employed. Now, I, I really appreciate knowing that there's been a very few instances where the cameras would be, you know, turned on. And I, and I think I also appreciate that the number of arrests have been almost nonexistent. I think we had, we said one and so on. So, begs to question, what exactly are they doing? Like, I guess begs to question, what is their purpose in our schools? They're, they're not being used very often. They, they should not be involved in school disciplinary for issues. There doesn't seem to be criminal activity, at least not, that produces summonses or, or the use of body cameras. So, I, and I'm, and I'm saying this in the back of a presentation earlier today.
That's a, that's, you know, I know where you're going with that question. I mean, I think that, would you feel differently if they had a bunch of arrests? You probably would feel that that's problematic. So, I think that, you know, that their presence is in itself a deterrent. They are acting in many instances as a adult, a trusted adult for our students. So, the fact that they don't make a lot of arrests is a good reflection on the status of what happens in our schools and the work that our SROs do. So, I think that it's, I mean, I feel like you're leading me to say, you know, because we don't make a lot of arrests, we don't need SROs. And that's not, that's not the way.
Well, I'm also saying it because back in October, when we had the administrators here, we had Derek Pierce saying that he would like to have an SRO over at, at his school where there isn't one. So, is there a greater, or is there proof that in these two schools, there's a lower incidence of these incidents compared to Casco Bay? That, like, what are they really deterring? Cause the school that doesn't have them, assuming we're not calling the cops either when things happen. So, I, I just don't understand what we're deterring kids from doing.
I'll just, just to make one quick distinction on that is, the, the arrests are very low, as we've kind of already talked about, like one to four with a high of seven in the course of the year. But, the calls for service, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, my recollection, it was 40s, 50s, maybe 60 some odd calls for service at the offices that, that both at Deering and Portland were, were handling during the course of the year. And again, I think that speaks to like the superintendent said, that they're not, those incidents of, and a lot of that is, is like thefts and assaults and harassment and cyber harassment, bullying, those sorts of things that they're kind of getting involved in. But, those aren't ending up in somebody going through the court system, somebody getting charged.
So, is the, so, again, in the school that we don't have one in Casco Bay, are they, are you guys getting called that frequently as well?
I'd, I'd have to look that up. Good question. I'd have to look that up.
That'd be, I think that'd be helpful to know. Just to know, because we, we talked about how the, your presence makes it so that you're overused or, you know, called upon more than you normally would. And I think comparing a school that we don't have, then it would be a good, a good way to examine that. Then, I guess my last question, yeah. Actually, I have two last things. First of all, I know this was not necessarily a big discussion, but it did come up last time. The fact that this MOU is automatically renewed every year, I think that as we look forward, having some sort of language here that says that it's renewed annually, I think that, that 'd be really helpful, especially if we end up asking that there's certain data that's collected, cause of those 40 or some calls. I'd be really interested to know, you know, who is it that we're calling for, right? The, the, number one, the demographics, the subgroups that they belong to, as has been pointed out. And I think this is why it's important to keep the discipline data in front of us when we have these discussions. And again, during our presentation today, I think there's, it's valuable to show our staff these disparities, cause they, myself, might not be fully aware of what is happening. And again, this is incredibly troubling when we see these disparities. And if 40 of those calls were involving students that were majority special ed or disproportionately special education students, or disproportionately economically disadvantaged students, or disproportionately black and brown students, I think that it begs to question, are we overpolicing certain segments of our, of our school community?
Great. And, and part of that is, a lot of that isn't that we're making contact with it, a lot of these reports, a lot of those contacts may be that we're just interacting with the victim. So, the person's calling us up and saying that their iPhone was, was stolen out of their backpack or something, and we never know who the suspect is. So, a lot of that data, we very well may not be able to have.
Absolutely. And so, I'll finish it up by saying, and I should've probably started with this, I am, I am grateful that we've continued, you know, the, the conversation and that you've, the police department has worked with the superintendent's office to address the concerns of the board. I'm incredibly grateful, grateful that the superintendent has shared some model practices and the model MOU language with our schools and administrators. And I think that it's, it's important that, that we have these discussions and that we address these, these concerns that, that we've raised as the school board. I, I, again, I still worry about a lot of the murky water in which we're operating the system, this program on. And, and that's not to say that I question anybody's intention. I'm mostly, and I think we should all be incredibly concerned with the unintended consequences of this program. And I think we also need to be aware of that even when we here in Portland have a model MOU, phenomenal office, police officers, a supportive superintendent, administrators that get it, even when we have all of those pieces in place, we are still normalizing a practice that in many, many other districts and, and many, many other schools has produced significant problems, you know, real, real issues. I mean, we need to understand that we are part of a system and by normalizing these practices, we lose an opportunity or we miss an opportunity to really shed light on something that's incredibly problematic. I'll leave it at that. Ms. Baker? And then Ms. Thompson?
This is now going back quite a bit, but when I asked my questions previously about kind of who decides whether the conduct is, is constitutes disciplinary action or criminal activity, and the superintendent talked about it was the, the principal's decision in terms of whether it was discipline, disciplinary action. Can we state that in the MOU? Because, because that isn't anywhere, that isn't anywhere in the, in the MOU, and it is a real source of, I think, the gray area. And so, just stating affirmatively that it is the principal or building administrators' decision whether something constitutes a disciplinary action.
Absolutely.
And then my second point, and then I'm done for the night, is this last bullet here says that we're gonna revise the policy between now and June and incorporate it into next year's MOU, which doesn't suggest that the MOU is just automatically renewed. So, I would just make sure to change that language, which the chair just highlighted as well, to not have, to not have it automatically reviewed.
Got it.
It's just those two, the two sentences under terms of agreement and renewal are, are not consistent. Cause the first one says that it's just through June 30th, and the second sentence says it will be renewed automatically. What's the intent there?
So, the intent was it rolled over from year to year unless it was actually brought back for discussion as this one was? And so, I hear you and we would be happy to make that change and just make it where it has to be renewed annually.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, Ms. Thompson and Ms. Jackson?
I think since we're beyond questions and commentary here, I'm gonna add my commentary because I've been waiting for, to say something opposed to asking questions. And I, I just want to say, I fully support the SROs. I know from my time on the board that there've been instances where students have brought to the SRO's attention. We've, we had instances of students standing in the bathroom, taking pictures in the mirror with a gun in their hand. Some of you, you know, weren't here at that time, but that was, saw, the principals saw it and the SROs might've brought, I think, brought it to their attention through other students, but also there were several situations with weapons, as well as drugs that were brought to the SROs. And I think we would have a lot more issues if that wasn't the case, that the students feeling comfortable and going, having had two high schoolers. I know that they were always, Corinne, I think her name was Corinne, Benke, Benke, was at Portland High School where my oldest went, and how involved she was in the community. And I think, from what I remember too, is the reason why we went into community policing as well, is to have those houses within our communities to get to know the people. And I kind of see you as kind of that housing like we have up on Manjoe Hill and we have on Reiki, the area and so on and so forth, is that you are our community policing. And as the superintendent said, I think there, it's a huge deterrent. You know, there are still things that are missed, but I think that the reason why our numbers are so low, and some may just say they're too high, but in my opinion, they're low because of the open and honest communication that happens between the students. And I think that other students raise concerns, and correct me if I'm wrong, of things that you're able to stop before they become a reality. So, for that, I say thank you. And, you know, when I was at Portland High School, many moons ago, but we didn't have an SRO when I was there, and there was, and I think I told the superintendent about this, there was a student, not a, not a student, but a student that lived, a person that lived locally, put it that way, and was high on drugs, and came into Portland High School and severely beat up a teacher to the point where it was not pretty. And the students were the ones that came to that teacher's aid to help him, and he was, he was pretty hurt. So, I think about now, with our opioid crisis and things that happened, if we didn't have the stopgaps that we do of what that might've looked like, if that teacher wouldn't have been so badly beaten. But also, I'm questioning, I'm wondering, I work at, me Medical Center, and we have active shooter training. All employees are open to go to active shooter training. I found it to be, it's more about the discussion around the mentality of the, the process of thinking and, and not necessarily to, you know, go after that person, but what would you do in this situation? Not enacting, enacting the whole thing, but giving you tools as an employee. And I'm just wondering, I think the MSBA, Main School Board Association has an active shooter training available. So, I'm just curious if, you know, again, when the time comes that if we, you know, make it an opportunity to be available for professional development, but that was just something I was thinking about as well. But, and again, I know I sound like a, a repeater for this too, but I will be forever grateful to Officer Black for stopping what could've been a really bad situation in freshman alley of a guy, you know, loading a gun in freshman alley and going into First Parish Church to do some real harm to an AA meeting. And him being at Portland High School, just happening to be locking a door, stopped that whole situation. It could've been a really bad. So, I know it was a while ago, but still to this day, it still is ingrained in my mind of how much, you know, you stopped from happening. So, thank you again, and I'm, I'm thankful that you're there and I, I really think that you're a great tool and you're, the kids trust you. So, thank you.
Was there anybody else? Nope. I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.